Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the September 11th meeting of the Hillsdale Borough Planning Land Use Board. We'll begin with the open public meetings statement read by our Deputy Secretary Tanya, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence in memory of the lives lost on September 11.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The notice of this meeting was published in two newspapers according to law, and time and place of this meeting have been posted in a prominent location in Borough Hall. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Tanya, when you're ready, you can administer the roll call of the board.
Chairwoman Cates?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reardon?
Here.
Secretary Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Alter?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Dr. Weinberg?
Here.
Mr. Hip?
Here.
Council Liaison Chohiemuk?
Here.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Here.
Also present is Board Attorney Ms. Cassetta, Board Engineer Mr. Setiel, and Board Planner Mr. Behrens.
Thank you, and we welcome the audience tonight. We just want to remind you to turn off your phones or turn them to vibrate. We are recording. This is being shown live. We also ask at any point if you come up, please speak into the microphone because people cannot hear at home. That's the feedback we're getting or in the recording. Chris, that's you guys, too. We've gotten feedback that you're not clear. Thank you, everyone. Okay, at this time, we're going to open the meeting to the public, and this is for any items or issues that will not be heard on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on any matter not being heard tonight? Seeing none, I'll close the meeting to the public, and we'll move on to approval of invoices. First, we have Chris D'Teo. Five invoices. I think there's maybe some questions, Chris, for you about the invoices. So, Board, are there any questions? Chris, I think you submitted Chipotle, correct? Some, like, much older invoices. So, how can we just have a history of why those are being submitted currently?
I have no idea.
Yeah, you've got 2023 invoices.
You have 2023 invoices.
I'm surprised they're in there, but I see the 2023. You have three 2023 invoices in there. I'm not sure why those escrows are in there. I couldn't tell you.
Did you say they are escrow or not escrow?
I don't know. I think these are escrows. I don't know why they're...
Were they taken out of escrow at the time?
I think we'd have to check the history to see if they were. They've already been paid.
I don't see that they were. I received an email from your office asking about this. This was before I even worked for the Borough.
Maybe these are outstanding, maybe, old invoices?
Yes.
Oh, these are invoices that haven't been...
That haven't been paid.
Okay.
I've never seen them before, though. This was...
It's pre-Tanya.
If that's the case, then you have to chase the applicants. If there's no money left in the escrow account, which I don't know if theirs or not.
Some, yes. Some, no.
If they're not, you have to ask the applicants to replenish the escrow account. That's all. So, these must have been residuals that weren't paid. That's why we're coming back here again.
I don't even think the applicant owns the building anymore.
Well, they're still legally. We have to pay escrow, no?
Chase away.
I have to do some homework on my end and go through the finances and see what is in each account.
Chris, I had one other question regarding the Patterson Street urban renewal invoice you sent from 2023 as well. I don't know if that's covered in the 2023 invoices, but this should, I don't think this should be under the purview of the planning board. I don't know why we were sent the invoice for the, it's 1540, 1,00540, from 11/29/23.
Excuse me, Mr. Raymond, was that invoice number 2023-33?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, this is, this is invoice for the redevelopment area.
I understand, but should that be under the purview of the planning board?
No, our invoice generally go to the Mayor Dazzle.
That's why I asked.
Right. It's not a review. It's not a review. It's reviewed for something after you've approved.
So, how do we handle that? Is this going to be excluded?
I will give that to the administrator.
So, we're not going to vote on that one. We're also not going to vote on the Chipotle ones. Tanya's going to investigate that and try to get more information. So, that means how many? Which three are we voting on then?
Yeah, Chipotle also looks like it's all post-planning board work. That's the, you know, close up their site, you know, COs and things like that, inspections.
So, post-planning, is that something that we should not be here?
Yeah, that would then go back to the other side.
Okay.
Goes back to who?
It's not a planable matter. It'd be under escrow for site inspections.
So, town?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of the planning board review.
Well, I still take care of all of the invoices. Anything for escrow, I do.
So, I'm trying to, you know, parse it out for the board here. Yes.
Okay, and so somebody has to sign off on these. It's not me since I'm paying them.
Okay.
How do we, do we exclude those two? Is there two or three?
Three, right? Chipotle and then redevelopment.
So, 2023-12, 2023-18, and 2023-8...
33.
33.
Thanks, Tanya. So, we're voting on 25 and 30.
It's 2024-25, and then it's 2025-30.
Yeah. Is the board clear?
Is there a total? Do you have a total? Just so we're understanding, instead of the 30, 260, 750, what is the new total?
Whatever, 295 plus...
These, all these invoices, not before the board. There's no, there are no review invoices here for the board. Let's all go over for, just on the escrow. These are inspection, site inspection. A lot of this is site inspection.
Okay, but that I pay, so...
Okay, well, yeah, the board needs not approve these because these, well, plus they want to, but they'll end up, they're not a site inspection. Your CFO has to approve, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, so none, then, or these two?
I'll go over this with the administrator next week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, but hold, like, you submit the old ones prior, and you just weren't paid? Is that because we've been through this before?
Those were the ones you weren't paying on, that's why.
You weren't paid, so you're revisiting. Okay, so...
Some not paid by the town, though.
Because it's the town. Okay.
Okay, so nothing, then. We're not approving anything. Thanks for clearing that up, Chris. Thank you, Tanya, for following up. Let's move on to the invoice for Harwood Lloyd LLP.
We don't have a, we didn't take a vote or anything.
Well, I don't think there's anything to vote on.
We're not paying any of his invoices?
No.
He says they're all going, they're all...
All of them. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, Harwood Lloyd LLP, $338.50, and second one, so there's two invoices. Please review. When you're ready, I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Well, before...
Oh, I'm sorry. You have a question, Tom?
Are these, yes, are these both escrow accounts as well? I don't see any escrow reference. I spoke to the board attorney, and she was under the impression that this is, they're both escrow. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, they will be paid for, from escrow?
From escrow.
Going to escrow, yes.
I didn't see any reference on the, so you mentioned that I should put that on the record?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Greep?
Second.
Second, Mr. Raymond.
Chairwoman Cates?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reardon?
Yes.
Secretary Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greep?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hip?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Moving on to Burgess Associates, four, five invoices totaling $2,237.50. I think you're all good there, Tom, with yours. No, any questions for Tom Bourne? Okay, none, I'll take a motion. Mr. Freeman?
Second.
Dr. Weinberg?
Chairwoman Cates?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reardon?
Yes.
Secretary Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greep?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hip?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of our meeting minutes from August 14th, 2025. I believe there's just three very small typos that are, have been corrected. Correct, Tanya?
Yes.
Okay, so the board have any questions about that? Let us know. Otherwise, you can review, and I'll take a motion. And they're very well done for a long meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
Motion, Dr. Weinberg?
Second.
Second, Mr. Freeman.
I don't, can he motion?
It's a minute. Oh, he wasn't sitting, if he wasn't sitting as a member, he was in the audience for part of it. Can you have a motion? We're going to have someone else's motion. Thank you.
Yeah, just put my name in for whatever he was.
Okay.
Second or motion, whatever.
Mr. Reardon, make the motion and then second.
All right. So, I will call everyone, and then they can abstain. Chairwoman Cates?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greep?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Abstain.
Mr. Hip?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Abstain.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. We'll move on to our resolution from our hearing last meeting, 2025-18PZ 0525, Block 103, Lot 6, 41 Craig Road, Daniel and Shari Kramer. Thank you for that excellent resolution, Allison. Please review, and when you're ready, I'll take a motion from a board member.
Motion.
Steve Reardon?
Second.
Second, Mr. Greep.
Chairwoman Cates?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greep?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hip?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Okay, before we move on to our hearing, this is PZ 725, Block 1208, Lot 1, 560 Permont Avenue, Hillsdale Self-Storage. We do have two members that are going to recuse themselves tonight. Three members, sorry. Yeah, Scott Raymond, Dr. Weinberg, and Mayor Scheinfield. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
See you later.
Good luck.
And I'm going to, before we open, I'm going to turn, yeah, thanks, the meeting over to our attorney, who's just going to catch us up on where we stand right now and how tonight will work.
So, for tonight's meeting, we've been advised that the church is represented by council. I'll ask you to come up and add your appearance before Mr. Tuvell continues with his presentation. And what we have discussed is that you will have the opportunity, thank you, oh, I thought that was turning it off.
You will have the opportunity, just like other members of the public, to question Mr. Tuvell's witnesses this evening, and then it's contemplated that the applicant will return at a future hearing, at which time you'll have the opportunity to present whatever evidence you intend to present. And I apologize for not knowing the full name of the church off the top of my head, but I'll ask you to enter it into the record.
And I just want to add that we're not going to be cross-examining for engineering tonight. In fact, we're going to bring up other professionals, and we'll proceed. And then, when you have some time to review, we'll engage in that at a future meeting.
That's the understanding. Just for the record, my name is Frank Magaletta, M-A-G-A-L-E-T-T-A, on behalf of the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Newark and the St. John the Baptist Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is, would I express your understanding also of the way things are going to proceed tonight?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Tuvell. And I apologize for my attire. It was kind of a last-minute.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Tuvell, you ready to proceed?
Yeah. So, just before we get into the application, I just want to make it clear that at the last meeting, we gave the church the same courtesy as their council was not available, did not come to the meeting, and I stipulated on the record that we had, I had spoken to their prior attorney, and that we would hold off on cross-examination and presenting further witnesses, and that we would try to reach out to them and try to see if there's any amicable resolution to any concerns. I tried to do that with no response. And I know council was just retained today, so I'm sympathetic towards that. But I just want to make it clear that this is the last sort of accommodation that we're going to provide in terms of moving forward with this application. So, it's, it's fine for tonight. We're going to present our witnesses, allow our traffic engineer and our architect, allow council to cross-examine, allow the public to cross-examine. But we've really tried in good faith to be accommodating to the church, to see if they have any concerns, and really, there's been no response. So, I'm hoping now with Mr. Magaletta being counsel to them, we can have a positive and productive dialogue between now and any future meeting of the board.
And I just want to say that that's completely agreeable to the, to the objector, that yes, in fact, we do want to try and meet, confer before the next meeting, so we can maybe try to resolve our issues. So, what he said was accurate. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. We understand. So, you want to call your first witness?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first witness I'd like to call is our traffic engineer, Nicholas Verderese, from Dynamic Traffic. Nick was not sworn in at the last meeting, so we should swear him in, and then I'll, I'll qualify him for the record.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Will you state your full name and spell your last for the record, please?
Yes, Nicholas Verderese, V-E-R-D-E-R-E-S-E.
Thank you, Mr. Verderese.
You're welcome.
All right, Nick, if you could just give your position with Dynamic Traffic, go through your educational background, licenses held, and experience testifying as a traffic engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University in 1990. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal founder of Dynamic Traffic located at 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. So, I have 35 years of experience. I haven't appeared here, but I've appeared at almost every other Burton County municipality, so I can add this one to my 250-plus.
Thank you. Well, how can we accept this witness?
All right, great.
This professional, sorry.
All right, so, so, Nick, your office prepared a traffic impact statement in connection with this application?
Correct.
All right, so, what I'd like you to do is break your testimony down into existing conditions of the roadway, then we can get into trip generation, parking, and overall site circulation as it relates to the application.
Yes. So, the first thing we did, we go out, we look at existing conditions, we look at aerial photography as well, and any other information we have on the surrounding roadways. Existing roadways, you're all familiar with the location. There's already been testimony on the site. I'm going to work off of A2, which is the site, overall site plan rendering, which has already been entered into the record. So, again, to orient everyone, north is to the, north, on the, north is to the top on the page. Prospect Place wraps the site along the bottom and through the middle of the two properties, with Piermont Avenue on the north side of the self-storage facility. So, we looked at existing conditions, approximately 30-foot wide road, low-volume, low-speed roadway. It's about 30 foot wide, carries two-way traffic. It's a short roadway. It ends maybe 400 feet or so to the east at Patterson Street as well, and opposite the self-storage is a Valley Street to the south.
All right. So, why don't we go through trip generation and any impacts that you see or lack thereof of traffic on this application?
Yes, you're all familiar, again, with what currently exists on the property. So, currently, on the site where the self-storage is going to go is a vehicle storage lot, which is essentially going to be relocated onto the Westerly piece of property, and the bus company that was previously operated on that site will be eliminated. So, there is the elimination of one use and the addition of another use. So, the additional use is the approximate 110,000-square-foot self-storage facility. I've done a fair share of self-storage facilities. They've been popular over the years of my career. They're extremely low traffic generators. As you can see by, we're providing eight parking spaces and two loading spaces. It doesn't generate a lot of in-and-out traffic. There are very few one-to-two employees on the property. It's very lightly used. If you've ever used self-storage, and I have in the last few years, you'll see when you go there, you don't see a lot of people coming in and out of the property. And that bears itself out when you look at the Institute of Transportation Engineers data for this type of use. It's a very low traffic generator, and as I mentioned, it's one of, it might be one of the lowest traffic generators, other than maybe some type of warehouse use, a small warehouse use with 100,000 data center-type use. This generates less than the industry standard for, for what they would consider a significant increase. What we, the ITE, NJDOT, they consider 50 to 100 trips as being significant. Even if you assumed all of the traffic associated with this is new, we're only looking at about 20 peak hour trips. So, that would be, you know, in and out combined, 20 vehicles on both pieces of property during the peak hours. That would have a negligible impact to any of the surrounding roadways, the residential development that's, that's under construction today.
And, Nick, just to be clear, when you say both, you mean 20 trips, the vehicle storage yard and the self-storage combined?
Both, combined, yes. If you look at that residential development, I don't know exactly how many units, but I saw the sheer size of it today. I'm going to guess that generates five to 10 times the traffic of what this property is going to generate. So, I don't have any concern with putting this here and there being any off-site impacts from the, from the traffic that's generated on the site.
All right. So, just from a pure trip generation perspective, there will be no significant impact or no detriment to this, to the roadway network or the surrounding area as a result of this proposal as it relates to trip generation?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, why don't we talk about parking?
Yes. So, one site is, is just parking. There's 71 parking spaces there. It's a mix of smaller spaces. I think they're about 10 by 21 or so. The other spaces are about 10 and a half by 75 on the, on the east side, and then they vary on the west side between 10-foot wide, and they're probably, you know, 40 to 50 feet long. The aisle width along the center, so down the middle, running in the north-south direction, is a 40-foot wide aisle. The reason we exceed the, the normal aisle width is because you're going to have larger vehicles getting in and out of those spaces, so we're comfortable with that. We have a turning template plan, three different ones on the, on the site plan set that show vehicles turning on and off the property, et cetera. Then, at the north and south end, we have more standard stalls. They're actually a little bit larger than normal, 10 by 21. We do have two design waivers in this parking lot, being the width of the driveway and the width of the aisle. So, the, the northerly aisle, the one that runs east-west on the north side, we're at 22 and a half feet. At the south side, it's 23 feet. Your ordinance requires 24. We have oversized stalls next to them. We could easily change it to meet the ordinance requirement. It's not really necessary here. We don't have a lot of traffic coming on and off the property on a consistent basis, so I'd rather see the larger stall for some of the larger vehicles than, than add a foot, a foot and a half to the, to the aisle. So, I think it's a better alternative to have what we've designed here versus meeting the ordinance.
So, the literal enforcement of that provision, you don't think is necessary here, and that the design that's been provided is more practical and appropriate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, that kind of covers, that's like, there's two driveways, as you already heard. One is south of Piermont, and one is north of Piermont. Good sightlines from those driveways, so we don't have any issues with the layout of that. On the self-storage, all of our access occurs on the south side, so on the north and west, it's just building face, so there's no driveways or parking on those side. On the south side, we have eight parking spaces head in into the building, and we have a loading zone, a landing area, and then there's a loading zone inside the building, approximately 40 feet by 40 feet wide, so it'll essentially fit two to three single-unit vehicles or vans that typically utilize this type of property.
And, Nick, just to be clear on the loading, and I know the architect can also confirm this, but all of the loading is going to be interior to the building, correct?
Yes, interior.
All right, and the, and the door closes, so it won't be visible from the street?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And then, there's standard 9 by 18 with one handicap parking stall on the property, and there's a concrete apron along the entire frontage there and sidewalk circling, circling that property.
All right. So, from a circulation perspective, you, you don't see, you take no issue with the way the self-storage has been designed? You think it's safe and appropriate, correct?
Yes, it works nicely. And as I mentioned before, it's such a low-volume generator that you don't have a lot of on-and-off-the-property activity.
There was a question by one of the board members at the last meeting regarding site distance for the self-storage facility. If you could just speak to that, if you don't mind?
Yes. So, the site distance you would want to look at here, because you have vehicles backing out on the property, even with driveways, you want to see, is there available sightline for the person backing and the person on the street? So, I looked at stopping sight distance for this 25 mile-per-hour roadway, and we have adequate sight distance. The requirement from the, from ASHTO, American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, is 155 feet for stopping sight distance for 25 miles per hour. I drew the line. There's plenty of sightline. If you're traveling south on Prospect Place, to see someone as you come around the bend, to see someone if they're backing out, and there's a clear sightline. It's a straight shot to the east as well. So, I don't have any concern there as far as people backing out onto the roadway.
Okay, and you see no queuing issues because this is a low-trip generator, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I have for Mr. Verderese.
Okay, thank you. We're going to turn over to our professionals first. Chris?
You made observations at these types of facilities before?
Yes.
Yeah, and what is the, what do you see as the peak period?
Weekday, mid-morning, mid-afternoon, and noon-ish on the Saturday.
So, it's out of the peak hour, normally?
It is, yeah. It doesn't happen. You have the employees come during the peak hour, but that's one or two. But people aren't coming here generally at 8 o'clock in the morning to, you know, move stuff on and off. It typically happens during the workday.
And, Chris, just so the board and the public understands the dialogue, you're saying that this doesn't get busy during the peak hour of the road, which would be...
Correct.
...in the morning when people go into school and work, or in the evening when people are going home or coming back from school.
That's right. Generally, 7 to 9, and 4:30 to 6:30 PM is our, is our normal...
No, I figured that's what you meant, but just...
That's fine. That's fine to clarify with the board, yes. In terms of the types of vehicles that come to these sites, what do you usually see?
Mostly SUVs, and a percentage, less than 20%, maybe single-unit vehicles, and those are the largest you see.
How about trailers?
No, we don't see those.
Okay, not U-Haul types, things like that? Okay, just curious, okay. You don't really see much pedestrian activity around them either.
I don't think I've ever seen a pedestrian, other than if it was an employee that took mass transit or happened to live in the area.
Right.
Because you're moving large items generally, so yes, no one walks.
So, the idea would be that people back into the, will be backing into the facility and then unloading or loading is what they're looking for?
Yeah, one way or the other. They'll do the back-in, or they're pulling forward and back out.
So, the movement of all the goods, et cetera, would be internal to the building?
Internal, yes.
Carting stuff around the outside of the building, in other words?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
You addressed my question about the peak hours, and my question, the follow-up question was going to be to understand if there are any conflicts with the church hours, what you might expect. Have you examined their, typically on Sundays, there might be other...
Even if we operate at our heaviest during church hours, we're such a small percentage. They wouldn't even notice we were there. They're going to have much more impact on our site than we would ever have on theirs.
When you consider your site, though, are we focused on just the self-storage or also the vehicle storage?
Well, both, both.
That, I could, I would think that they'd have different types of peak hours. Meaning, self-storage, I could understand the peak hours that you discussed, but the other site would mostly accommodate contractors, I think primarily. That's the intent, right? So, generally work Monday through Friday, early mornings, like...
Again, off of, you know, service time for a Catholic church.
No conflict, from your perspective.
Yes.
One question that came up at the last meeting was the orientation of the self-storage building, where you have the driveway, parking spaces sort of facing south, and whether or not it might be a better configuration to sort of flip it or spin it maybe 90 degrees so the parking was oriented toward the west and didn't have the conflict with whatever that side street is. Valley Street?
Yeah, I don't have any concern with that. Again, the volumes are so low on that street. Someone backing out of here, I mean, if you've been to all the properties out there, there are, there's all kind of stuff going on in front of every property. There's backing out of trailers and landscape vehicles, construction vehicles backing in and out, backing in, tractor trailers backing in on the roadway on a lot of the other properties. This is much better than everyone else. Putting this in here is better than any of the other uses on the roadway as far as traffic.
Granted, the site itself is square-ish, though, so I guess my question is, one better than the other, meaning that even just to twist it, you wouldn't really have to do to do a redesign, or, you know, you wouldn't have to tweak much, I guess, is my thought?
Yeah, I mean, no. I, I think this works nice. I, I don't have a concern with the street opposite, opposite this.
Tom, what's your thinking about why that's better?
I, not being an engineer-
Right, right. I'm just curious.
... territory, maybe I shouldn't be, just from, from a layperson's perspective, not being an engineer. Again, just the question of whether or not there's a conflict of backing up where, you know, near the intersection, or actually around the bend of Prospect, or where Valley Street is.
Okay.
And again, recognizing it's a permitted use, and that they're allowed to have the driveway configured that it is per ordinance, just long-term, whether or not one is better than the other?
Right.
Just a question.
Thank you.
And, and then finally, there was a recommendation to relocate the trash enclosure because of the potential sight distance issue at the corner. Is that something the applicant would be agreeable to? I forgot where we left off.
My opinion is, it's actually the building that creates, the building juts out further than the trash, as far as if you're driving south and coming around the bend. So, the trash doesn't really impact it, because the trash is up near the head of the vehicle. When you're backing out, it's across the apron and into the road, and the trash is way up against the building. So, it really isn't in the sightline as you come around the bend, if that makes sense?
I, I see what you're saying. It was a question that was asked, and that's your professional opinion, so I'll leave it at that. So, no further questions?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I'm gonna just, just clarify a little, just so everyone understands where the trash is. It's down here in the southwest corner. It's tucked up almost against the building. It's about half the landing parking stall, so the back of the car is already past it, even before it starts to back out. Then, there's eighteen feet between the back of the stall and the curb. As the vehicle backs out, the sightline, as you look past here, you're actually, the limiting point is the corner of the building, but you're actually seeing past the trash enclosure. 'Cause you wanna see it back in this area, that's a hundred and fifty-five feet back here. Once you get up to here, you've already eliminated any issue with the, with the sightline.
Yeah, and as you said, your office measured all the site distances, and they meet all industry standards, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Greep, you ready?
Is there gonna be access to the storage on Sundays?
Correct, yes.
At page three of your report, there's a table, and it has A M P S H, P M P S H, and Saturday P S H. Where does Sunday fall on that table?
Sunday would be similar to Saturday.
Okay.
So, it'd be that twenty-three.
Do you know if there are any pedestrian crosswalks that are being added to the streets in connection with this project?
There aren't any shown on the plan, and I haven't heard anyone talk about it in the past, but if you have a suggestion, happy to hear.
Yeah. And that would, and that would be a borough, obviously, request, 'cause it's in the right-of-way, but we would take no issue with painting a crosswalk if that's-
I mean, I'll leave it to our professionals-
Yeah, no, I understand.
... if they have any opinions about where pedestrian crosswalks should be placed, but I'd have concern if they were near the parking spots.
Okay.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Mr. Alter?
Did you actually do a traffic study of the existing traffic?
We did not.
You did not?
No.
So, you don't know whether traffic's gonna be heavier at certain times of the day, when the church school gets out, or other times of the day?
Uh, no. We, we normally wouldn't do a traffic study for something of this nature, because it generates so little traffic, that no matter what I counted on the street, when you add twenty cars to it, which is, again, very conservative, because the uses are already there, it doesn't change anything as far as impacts to the adjacent roadways.
You're mostly talking about the traffic for the self-storage. Let's talk about the parking.
Okay.
That's not permanent part, long-term storage, is it?
Well, it all matters what you're using it for. So, some of it is long-term, and some of it is being used on a daily basis.
So, you'll have activity every day, in and out?
Sure, yes.
Your landscape trucks, or which require-
Yeah, it will, it will operate, Mr. Alter, just like it does today, on, on the existing property, exactly as it does in the current condition. It's just moving across the street, where we're striping it and making the circulation patterns much better and safer than they are today. Is that correct?
Correct. I could bring the existing area, if you wanna kinda see what the existing conditions are, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear. It's not, we're not introducing anything to the area that doesn't exist now. We're just improving it.
So, the existing parking lot handles all these same equipment-
Exactly. We are not changing the use at all, from what's there.
Trailers, landscape trailers-
That's correct. That's correct.
Jitters.
Whatever was there, what's there now, will be there in the future. The use has not changed whatsoever. So, Nick can show you, like, we talked about this at the last meeting, but just to refresh everybody's mind, Nick, why don't you just go through, just explain that it's just transferring over to the other lot?
Yeah. So, this is A1, which is the aerial map exhibit, which was previously entered. So, the yellow boxed-out area on the right, so the east side, near the center of the page, as you can see, there's landscape vehicles and some pickup trucks, et cetera, all within that parking lot. That's all just gonna transfer over to this, this property that's closer to the west side.
You also mentioned the new project going off, the new residential project. Just so you know, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-six units. What do you think the impact's gonna be when you have the traffic from two-hundred-and-fifty-six cars possibly running in and out?
I think their impact is, well, now that you tell me it's two-fifty, that's about ten times the traffic of our site, so.
But what will the impact be on the self-storage?
Their impact on our facility?
Yes.
Not, I, I don't think much of their traffic is driving past our site, because don't they all wanna get onto Patterson, because you can't go anywhere to the west of this or south?
Yeah. So, your testimony is, we won't impact their facility, the residential, and the residential won't impact this?
No.
Okay.
The way this neighborhood lays out, so Patterson is on the east side, it's the only way to go out of this whole area.
Right.
You can't get to the west 'cause of the stream. To the south is where the church is, is a small residential neighborhood that has two streets, and all they do is go out to Patterson also. So, all five of these roadways, they all access onto Patterson. So, anyone on any of these isn't driving north-south through the site. They're just driving east to get onto Patterson. So, everyone from the residential development is just driving out, Nick or Barker, or Brookside, is it Brookside? Brookside out to Patterson.
And you're aware that Patterson is probably one of the heaviest-traveled streets in town?
That, it's doing exactly what it's meant to be, taking the small, local roadways, putting it onto the collector roadway, and then distributing that out from the-
Yeah. And just to Mr. Alter's point, that's why this is, in your opinion, that's why this is, has synergies with that, because this is such a low-volume generator as opposed to other uses.
Yes. Putting this in here is, is a good thing on the traffic end, as far as choices of land uses that could go here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reer?
I believe you said Prospect is thirty-foot wide?
Thirty feet, give or take.
Give or take. I know there's no hard curve.
It varies, 'cause it's older.
And now, currently, there is people parking on that street. Do you feel it should be eliminated, or do you recommend it?
Well, not that people obey it, but there is only parking on one side of the roadway?
Yeah, I believe it's the opposite, the existing-
The opposite side of our-
It's where the storage unit, I believe, is going.
Yes, it's on the, the south side of Prospect. On the north part, south part of Prospect, it's not signed, so they park on our side, but along our south frontage, they're supposed to park on the other side of the street.
I'm more concerned about it directly across from, can you take that board down and show the rendering board? I'm looking at satellite images, and a lot of people do park across from the most southern entry into the parking lot, not to the storage building, to the seventy-one space parking proposed. Correct?
Yes, they park here.
Now, is that gonna be something that gets eliminated for on-street parking, due to that being detrimental to people coming in and out of that parking lot? 'Cause no trailer's gonna make that turn with someone parked in front of there.
I don't think it needs to. We have some turning templates. I don't think it showed any issues there, but it's something we can look at and ensure that, you know, maybe we don't have parking directly across the driveway. I, I'd have to take a look at it in more detail, but-
All the reason I'm asking, 'cause I know a lot of businesses down there, that's where the employees park, 'cause the, most of them are landscapers, and, and obviously, their yards do not adapt to hold their employees' vehicles, so that's where I'm just asking for that part.
There used to be a bus facility here, so some pretty large vehicles were pulling in and out of this property.
There's also no curb. They can go out freely on every angle.
They could. But ours is nice. It's twenty-four feet wide, you know. I think it's, it's well-designed.
All right. Staying on the, the parking lot, I, we keep saying that it's seventy-one spots. What's the actual capacity of that thing, though? 'Cause seventy-one spots aren't seventy-five feet long each spot.
I couldn't say. It all matters who they end up renting to, if they rent-
Well, doesn't that directly affect the traffic study?
It would.
How many vehicles coming out?
The volumes are so low, that even if I said there were twice as many, it would still be eight trips instead of four in the peak hour.
Okay. And there is a way out, and people do take Valley to get to Orchard in order to get to Broadway. So, it is a big cut-through. I do it. I know for a fact. So, I just think it drives more people through the, the St. Chad's Academy, especially drop up in the morning with the, the school kids. So, I don't know, and you said you didn't do any studies? It was just all just calculations?
I didn't. And if I did, and I showed you, five of our people that chose to go that way, it's not gonna show any impact to, even no matter what the numbers were that I, that I did traffic counts on.
All right. So, we, we just don't have, just circling back to that last seventy-one spot question, just 'cause I don't think we have a full grasp on how many vehicles can go there. In your opinion, how many could fit in a seventy-five-foot-long spot?
Landscape vehicles, which are, seem to be a good-
Like a Mason truck, I guess, yeah.
Maybe two in there?
Yeah, that last meeting said two.
What's my?
Last meeting, they said two.
They said two? So, we're just gonna double the seventy-one for length terms?
Twenty-something of them are only twenty feet long, so those are only gonna have one. But say fifty of them had two-
Just for the general public, what's the standard size of a parking spot?
Nine by eighteen is a standard stall. We have like ten by twenty-one, so they're, you know, for-
Rightfully so, for oversized of things. Gotcha.
Something a little bigger.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Just a question. The, the employee for both the self-storage and the park, the long-term parking, is it, is that part of the eight spots in the self-storage?
Of the long-term parking, as I understand, there are no employees. But the eight spots, yes, that would be, the one or two employees would park in those.
Okay. So, there would be no, no employees on-
There's no employees for the vehicle storage. They just, people just get their key fob or whatever their, their code, and go on and off the site.
Okay. No other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Hip?
I'll reiterate what Mr. Reer was talking about with the parking spaces, and just given the, the size of the spaces, I think at the last meeting, we actually heard the seventy-five-foot spaces could have three vehicles. Now, there's fifty-foot spaces that could probably fit two vehicles. So, I mean, I was just running the math. I mean, it's almost like a hundred and forty parking spaces that could be there. I don't know if that's the variable that's used to calculate the trip generation for the storage lot. I'm also not sure if long-term storage is the appropriate land use code for the use, given the dialogue about how the site could be used as, you know, just overnight storage for contractors. I'm not in, like, total disagreement that this won't be a, this will be a huge impactful problem, but I do think that there could be some corrections or revisions made to make the study more accurate in terms of what this will actually generate in terms of traffic for the parking component. I think the self-storage lot, I think it is a, it's a sleepy use. But the vehicle storage lot, I think there's some concerns about its trip generation, and it's just the number of parking spaces that are there. The site distance, I was the one that raised that comment. I, I understand that the building is in the, is the more determining factor in terms of obstruction. I think the suggestions were more just recommendations to optimize the sightlines, just given the curve. Right now, people are probably driving slowly, but maybe with the residential development coming on, people will drive a little bit more hastily through the neighborhood, so maybe we should optimize. It's a hypothetical.
Yeah. I, I, and I think we said at the last meeting, we have no issue if, if we wanna work with Mr. T, Mr. Satil, if we have to shift it slightly to optimize it. As you said, I think that's the appropriate word.
Yeah.
That's fine. We can do that.
I had a quick suggestion. There's kind of an unnecessary piece of sidewalk behind it, because it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
So, if we just pushed it in, I don't know if that sidewalk width is, is probably six feet, so we could push it in six more feet, so that would, that would-
Yeah, I think it's anything like that, or even the landscaping, just making sure the landscaping is either removed or maintained to not obstruct the sightlines.
Yeah. I think that's, I get what you're, you're, the intent of your comment, and we can work on that. That's fine.
I, I do think that there's some, you know, reasons to maybe look at at least the morning traffic, given the school component. I do agree that on Saturdays and in the evenings, this area is probably pretty sleepy. But in the mornings with the school there, I don't know the exact numbers and how, how much traffic passes through it, but it could be worth looking into. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, it is relocating, the use is relocating from the one lot to the other. It's not, that's why, I know it's, sometimes it's hard with site plans. You think we're introducing something new, 'cause you're seeing it built, but it is there now. But, but to your point, I underst, and it's, it's fair, just to make sure that, that, that peak hour morning is, is exactly what it, what it is, even though Nick indicated that if, even if he doubled it, it wouldn't have an impact. But we'll take a look at that. I understand the comment.
Yeah. I think it's, it's more, just, I agree that this is taking an existing use and just relocating it. But it's, while it's not a change of use, it's a change in the density of the use, given the increased number in parking spaces, right? So, you're, in a way, you could be increasing the trip generation of the site. And I don't think you need to go out and study intersections, but maybe you could go and just put any, like, count, put a tube down, count the traffic on the roadway for a week, just something like that.
That's, that's fine. Understood.
Anything else, Mr. Hip?
I think, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you so much. I just, I have a question, whether or not this was confirmed at the last meeting, that the lot for the vehicle storage is not in the wetland buffer? Did we confirm that with the D E P?
Oh, I can, I can have Tom just come back up. Can I just bring Tom up?
Well, is it, I mean, I guess if he's gonna come-
How about I ask him, and then I can communicate?
Okay. It's just, that's fine.
From, my engineer says it is not within a wetlands buffer.
And, and so that, so you, that's D E P, like you have D E P statement on that?
Yeah. Typically, you would go on G I S mapping, and just make sure that it's not delineated.
Well, this is to Chris. Chris, you wrote the comment that they should provide testimony whether an L O I was sought. Do you still, I don't know that that's something, do you know whether that was sought?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
He did indicate to me that we also received a letter of interpretation from the D E P.
Yeah, that's what I was asking for.
And, and it was submitted to the board.
Okay.
So, you have that.
Okay. I see.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right. So, at this time, we're going to open the meeting to the public for questions. These are from Mr. Verdi. These are questions about, obviously, parking.
Madam Chair, I just forgot to have Mr. Verdi mention one thing that was also-
Okay, go ahead.
That was also mentioned at the last meeting.
Go ahead.
So, there was, there were questions about vehicles and flooding, and the applicant is willing to put bollards in the vehicular storage lot, in addition to all the fencing that is being proposed as well. So, Nick, you just wanna mention that real quick?
Yeah. So, at the head of each stall will be a bollard, essentially, for the reason that, you know, was discussed at the last, if there was a flood and, you know, a vehicle happened to be moved in the flood. And it also defines the end of the parking stalls as well.
Can you say to the public what the bollard would actually do if there was a flood, how that helps?
So, there, there are concrete bollards in the ground, and if, if a vehicle impacted it would, you know, in the flood, it would keep it from-
Keep it-
-exiting the property, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, at this time, we'll open the meeting to the public for questions on what you just heard.
So-
Chris, I can't hear when you guys are talking. Question, yes? Yeah, I'm gonna do that first, yeah. So, this are questions on the traffic and the parking, and we're first gonna open to the attorney, Mr. Maglada. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Verdi, just, I wanna focus on the parking.
Yeah, thanks for bringing the mic over.
Is this okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, I wanna focus on the parking for the proposed storage unit or site.
Yes.
So, you said you did use the I T E for, for your calculations for storage. Which edition was it of the I T E?
The one we, well, when we did this study, was the eleventh edition.
Okay. And is, have you looked at the twelfth edition to see if there's any changes?
There is a twelfth. There's been negligible changes for this land use.
But you did check it or not?
I did.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, focusing on, as a couple people-
I literally got the twelfth edition like within the past week, just so everyone understands why we didn't use the twelfth here.
I thought it was that more than we said that, but I, I take your word for it, for sure. Um, everybody asking about the parking stalls, the eight parking stalls on the, uh, on Prospect Place to the south?
Yes.
So you said you did a sightline study, correct?
Yes.
Now, the cars, you said they would, they would head into the spot, not back into the spot, right?
One or the other, it's, it's a choice of the-
Okay, so there's no requirements, it's up to the driver how they want to enter the spot, right?
It would be, yes.
Okay, now, is there a sidewalk in front of these stall?
Uh, there is, yes.
Okay, and so when the person, the driver goes into it, they, when they want to leave, they have to back out into the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
Now, if they're going to go north on Prospect, they're going to back into the one lane of travel and go north, which, maybe back in to the right and then go up, right?
Yes.
And if they're going to go east on, on Prospect, they would go across back of it to two lanes of traffic, correct?
Yes.
And then they would make the right and go towards Prospect, towards east of.
Correct.
And you're telling me, or tell you, you're testifying that there's sufficient sightline for the cars backing into, over the sidewalk and into the two lanes of traffic to back up safely?
Yes.
And when did you do these measurements?
I did it right on the plan.
Okay, but you didn't go visually inspect it yourself?
Well, I visually inspected it as well, but I have to do the measurements on the plan, yes.
Okay, and you had mentioned in your testimony that, um, with respect to the church traffic, that the church traffic will impact the site more than your site, than, than your site's traffic will. Do you recall that testimony?
Yeah, the church generates a lot more traffic than us, yes.
So what about the conflict between the church traffic and churchgoers and people backing into the spot?
It, it's no different than when they drive on every other street that has a residential driveway that the people back out of.
But now you have eight parking spaces on a turn, it's a little more dangerous, is it not?
Yeah, I, I don't think the church people are actually going past our site because they're all going to the east again, so everyone from the church makes a right turn so they don't really impact and they don't interact with most of the parking stalls.
But they have to come to the church, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, but they have to go to church and are coming down Prospect, coming south on Prospect to get to the church?
I doubt many come south on Prospect either, but there may be some.
But you don't know that, right?
Even if they do, I'm, I'm not concerned with it, it's a low-volume area.
Okay, and then as far as the Sunday, uh, measurements for traffic, for parking, excuse me, so you think, what's, what's it going to be peak on Sunday for your, for your facility? You, look at your notes, it's fine.
Yeah, we, we project maybe twenty total trips coming on and off of the self-storage.
And did you calculate what the traffic from the church would be Sunday morning?
I did not.
Okay, does the ITE account for that?
Well, there's data from ITE, but if you wanted to know, you would do a traffic count. But again, as I explained at the beginning, when you add small uses that don't generate any real traffic, and I'm fine, I'll go out and do traffic counts and analysis and great, and I get paid for that, that's wonderful. Um, I like those questions a lot of times because I get to do a little more work on the job.
Sure.
But I'm telling you, from thirty-five years of doing this, I'm not going to see any capacity issues when I do traffic counts out here at this intersection of Valley and Prospect.
But the more the focus, I think, is backing into, into, onto Prospect on that, on that turn, that's really the focus, and you're saying there's a sufficient sightline?
There is.
Okay, and the curb cut for those eight spaces, what's the, what's the width of that, please? If you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
But it's, it's, uh, continuous, correct? Those eight stalls?
It is.
How I, how wide is each stall? Let me do some simple-
Nine.
So eight times nine is what?
Seventy-two plus forty, so we'll say a hundred and twelve.
Okay, how about approximately, again, I'm not holding it to use, it's an approximation. All right, so it's a hundred and twelve curb cut, and people have to, pedestrians have to go across that, correct? Go, go across Prospect, east or west on Prospect, right?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as the, the two, um, loading docks, I guess I'll call it, where, now, those vehicles, do they back in or do they head into that spot?
Uh, whichever they choose, again.
Okay, there'll be no requirement as to how they should do it?
No.
Okay, once they're in the interior, is there a move, is there room for the vehicle to maneuver?
Uh, no, they generally, they have a long apron to drive in, so they'll maneuver and then they'll go straight in, like I said earlier, forty feet, I'm guessing you're going to get three across.
So, all right, so my question though is when the vehicles are in there, they're just for loading and unloading, they're not maneuvering in there to move the vehicle around to go someplace else within the site?
No, no.
Okay.
And just to be clear too, the, the architect will testify to this, but you'll see that a door shuts when the, when the vehicles in the loading area shut.
And what is the purpose of shutting like that, if you don't mind me?
What's that?
Why is it, what's, why shut it? If they're, once they're in there?
So the loading, the screen comes through.
All right, thank you. Not that you're testifying, but.
I'll have, I'll have that confirmed by the architect.
I'm sure you will. I'm not concerned. All right, that's all I have at this point, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Verdiessi.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So now we're going to open, um, to the public for further questions, if you're coming up. Um, this, again, like last meeting, this is for people who are not being represented by the church and the church's attorney, and that you live some, somewhere in a site that, in a, a local town that would be impacted or site, or home that would be impacted, so someone nearby, and when you come up, you need to just identify yourself and ask a question, and please ask a question that we haven't already heard and that's not already part of the record. Yes, and the mayor's going to flip around the display so that the public can see it as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we can't, you have, we can't hear you now. All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to ask questions? Please come up, thank you.
I have a question, I don't know if I-
We have to wait till you're at the mic, just wait till you're at the mic, and then we need to identify you.
Paulette Gilchrist, G.I.L.C.H.R.I.S.T., 124 Saddlewood Drive.
Thank you.
And my question is, with the self-storage, you keep, um, the gentleman had said that they would be cars or SUVs. What happens with trucks? What happens when you, you rent a mini, you rent a small truck because you're moving and you want to bring your squids there? What happens?
Yeah, we talked about the single-unit trucks thirty foot long as well.
And is there room to then back out?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Mary Ellen Breen, 183 Magnolia Avenue. I just have a question about the bollards. Um, where would they be located in that lot?
Uh, at the head of each parking stall, so around the outside.
Around the outside?
Yes.
So like along, along the Brook side?
The Brook, then all four sides.
Okay, that's what I wanted to. Um, my other question is, and we couldn't see that, so I was kind of just looking at my map, um, trying to visualize what you were talking about, but, um, when you come around the corner from Valley, I guess, no, Prospect, around the corner, how close is the building to the street, like, as far as like a sightline if you're coming around the corner?
I like that you're making them work.
Right, just if someone was coming around the corner, can they see around the corner?
Yes, that's-
Not necessarily to see all the, I don't visualize much traffic from that storage, but the traffic from the other parking lot.
Yes, uh, yeah, so it's about twenty feet from the intersect, from the, from the curb where it, uh, rounds the corner of the building, so there's twenty feet there, there's street trees as well.
Okay.
Nicely planted.
Okay.
But yes, there's a sightline through that area. I talked to the site engineer about making sure any landscaping we have is low in that area.
So you can see. Um, and then that particular corner, there, is there anything that's going to change about that corner, a blinking yellow light or anything put in there to warn people traffic may be coming?
No.
I think people are more concerned about more traffic that you haven't seen yet from a future project, so.
Yeah, it's thirty feet wide through there, so, you know, it's adequate for the two-way traffic and parking on one side.
Because, you know, some people go, do not turn the corner and continue straight across because there's a rear parking lot that they need to access, so if the trucks are located closer to the Brook, they may use, um, Valley more than Prospect. Which one is going this way? Uh, you know what I'm saying? They may come around, come out of that lot and turn right to use Valley more than they did before, because there was no access before.
Yeah, but on this site was the bus company, and then there was another storage lot for, for stuff, so there was activity on this site before.
Right, but it's, right now, it's just, it was a building that's back there that's going to be removed, right?
It's up near the front, it's that little bus.
Right, but that building is where the lot is, right?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so I'm thinking maybe more peop, more of those landscapers or may choose to come out and come around the curve, whereas when they used the lot before, there's not access coming out there, there's all trucks parked along that.
Yeah.
Did you see it? Did you look at it?
I don't think I totally understand what you're asking me, but I, I don't anticipate people choosing Valley over just going straight out to Patterson.
Parking out before.
Correct.
So, I don't recall there being access to come out here all the time. During the day, there are trucks parked along here. So now that it's moving here, prior to this, they were probably all coming out here. Now that it's here, a lot of them may come this way, or they may go that way.
Well, right now, there's a driveway that's almost exactly opposite Valley, so I'd think they'd be more likely to drive straight across into Valley than choosing to make the right turn into Valley and have to make multiple turns to finally make it to Patterson. Some will go out Pyramid, some will go out, uh, Prospect. I don't anticipate, I really don't anticipate any of the traffic from the site needing to use Valley in any instance.
Okay. Um, do you know that Valley, though, you can take Valley all the way out to Hillsdale Ave?
I hear that, there's a, when I drove there, there was a sign that said, "Don't drive through here," so is no one paying attention to it?
No, but, I'm just saying, you can't, it, it's doable.
Yes, but you'd have to break the law to drive that way, correct?
I don't think so.
There's a sign that says, "No outlet," or you can't, you had to make a left turn. When I got to the end of Valley, I had to make a left. I either made a right into the church, and there was a sign in front of me that told me I couldn't go straight, and I had to make a left.
I want to make sure I was talking about the right thing, because, again, I wasn't looking at this before. Um, Valley is the little street in front of St. John's, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so anyone can turn all the time and do, and they park on there, if you ever go during the day, it's double, it's parked on either side.
Yes, another reason why I wouldn't choose to use Valley in my landscape truck.
Right, but you can. You're allowed right now.
Yes, but they're not, you're not going to do it because if it's narrow and there's cars parked, you just drive five hundred feet and you get to Patterson. Why would you navigate through the whole residential neighborhood?
But you might because you can cut straight over to Hillsdale Ave.
You can if you violate the law. And, and I, I can't design for people that are going to violate the law.
I don't know.
I think the two of you have sort of hashed this out as much as is going to be productive.
I just, I'm curious, you know, if there's any plan in place, should there be excess traffic there?
Um, I'd be more concerned with all the people from that residential building cutting through than our small traffic line from this.
Well, I think we are, for sure, and since it's the same entity doing your project as that, that's probably why we're concerned, but.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Breen. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Come on up.
My name's Annie Mitchell, I live, my name's Annie Mitchell, I live at 890 Edison Street in the township of Washington.
Thank you.
Okay, um, good evening, I'm the principal of St. John's Academy, which is located on the property of St. John the Baptist Church.
Just one moment, because we have a question, whether or not you're represented by the attorney here?
Yeah. She's the principal of the school, I represent the school, or is it the church?
So you're not representing the school that's there?
That is correct.
I'm really not sure of the relationship between the church and the school, to be honest.
Uh, the school, St. John, um, St. John's Academy is the school as part of the Arch of the Assistant Network, located on the property of St. John's.
Which, which, which Mr. Magalatta said he represented. You could ask him to ask your question.
You can ask, he can represent your question for you, so you can speak to him and, and he can prepare your question.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to preclude you from asking a question, but maybe you could just do it through Mr. Magalatta.
Yeah.
Because the, um, they've all mentioned the school and the traffic, I'm the person who actually can answer those questions for you.
We understand, you, you can actually speak to him in the hallway where other people are asking questions, and then he can, he can represent your question.
Yeah, I don't want to preclude you, but maybe just go through Frank.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your understanding. Anyone else who's not represented by the church? Thank you.
Yes, James Mallard, 34 Lake Street, Hillsdale, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of questions about, I, uh, we couldn't see this, uh, when you were talking about.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine.
If you can explain to me where are the vehicles going to enter this storage facility, because we couldn't see it from here.
Uh, the store, so there's parking stalls along the south side of the building, and for the loading, it's in the center of the building essentially.
So they're going to be, they're going to be entering and exiting off of Prospect into the facility?
Correct.
So that's the same street that all the landscapers and all the contractors are parked?
Uh, yes.
All right, so I was just wondering if you ever been on Prospect Street during the daytime when the, all that activity has been going?
Yes.
Oh, you have, okay, because there's a, a lot of traffic on both sides, including Block 1207 also. There's vehicles that are parked, and you say they're only supposed to park on one side, but they park on both sides. So since it's a two-way traffic area, it is extremely difficult to navigate through there sometimes, so vehicles backing out of that storage facility.
Mr. Mall, can you just phrase it in terms of a question? You can say the same thing, but you have to be asking a question.
My, my question is, don't you think it's rather dangerous for trucks to be backing out of that facility onto Prospect? Because it's true that eventually you might have some vehicles, but most of the time, you're going to have storage trucks, that's how they load and unload. So my question is, I don't know why the entrance to that facility couldn't, couldn't be on Prospect Place rather than on the, on Prospect Place that is running north and south than on east and west. I'm talking about rotating that facility.
I, I hear you.
Because it's-
I don't have any concern, again, with it. It's very low, we keep talking about eight parking spaces, it's not like this is a convenience store, and people are coming and going out of these parking spaces all day long. You come in there, you're there for a half hour, you leave, we get a handful of people in an hour. Um, the, the trucks that come in are single-unit, they're using the wide driveway, so they have a lot of maneuverability there. Uh, there's only parking permitted on the south side. Now that we have a curb cut, there'll be no parking on the north side here, so that actually is a benefit, because now people are legally parking along our property frontage there.
Also, when the 256 apartment complex is completed, nothing's gonna stop people from traveling south on Prospect Place, making that turn and, and heading out to Patterson Street, because that's, that's a two-way street right now.
Yeah, I think I talked about that before. Um, I don't anticipate much of the traffic from that development traversing past this property.
Then how about that proposed parking lot that's gonna be moved across the street with the landscapers, they're gonna be, they're gonna be working, they work six days a week.
Yeah.
They're in and out of there all day long. My concern is about traffic also traveling from that, traveling through that area.
There, there's activity, I mean, it's a street, right? There, we have two users to the north of us that are industrial-type users, we have that, what you can see on this plan, just north of us, a large tractor-trailer facility of trucks coming on and off. They've all been operating on these streets all this time. Uh, we're putting a use on here now that's innocuous compared to the rest of the uses.
Right, I understand, but when you're moving all those vehicles that are parked there now across the street, you're not really eliminating anything, now you're adding the storage unit plus-
Question, please, yeah, question.
Plus, the question, the question is, I'm saying, that's gonna add tremendous amount of traffic, because you're not, you're really adding, adding traffic now, because you're just moving the equipment across the street.
Yeah, so we're not adding, because we're just moving it, correct?
Well, I think it's rather the-
You can make a comment later in the, in the, in the hearing, you absolutely can comment later on.
I, I would think for safety reasons, don't you think it's wise to rotate the, the entrance to the, to that storage facility on Prospect Place that runs north and south rather than interfere with the vehicles on the other street wall, the landscaping trucks are going in at it?
Uh, there are vehicles parked on both parts of Prospect, so if you have a concern and you think it's an issue, then the driveway can't be on Prospect on either side. My contention is that it works on this south side as we're proposing. It would work on the west side as well, it would work on the north side probably too.
So it could work off, so it could work off Pirmont?
Yes, but we, this is how we chose to orient it, and we think it works well.
No, I understand it, but don't you think it would be more feasible if you were to rotate the facility and have everybody exit off Pirmont as not to interfere with the people, the other people coming down Prospect? If you rotated 108?
No, because there's users on Pirmont that we then interact with, so you're basically saying we can't be on any of the streets, because your argument for the safety-
You can ask a question and hear the answer, we can't go back and forth on the same question.
Yeah, the argument on Prospect Place would just translate to all the other frontages, so you're basically saying we can't have any access.
I just, the bottom line is, he answered the question. He said that the, he said that he thinks it's fine, it's a low trip generator, and that it's not gonna have an impact. I know, you might not like the, the answer, which is fine, you're entitled to not like the answer, and you can comment on that later, but you can't keep asking the same question over and over. He, he, he answered it three times.
Well, okay, I, I will comment on it later, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mall.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has a question for Mr. Verterese? You, would you like to, yes?
Well, I'll answer.
You, you can come up and they can come up after you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for the indulgence. All right, Mr. Verterese, so the question is posed to, with respect to the context of, there's a school to the south of the property, it's-
I'll point it out to you. It's down here. So, I'll represent to you that the, that the drop-off for the school is between 7:30 and 7:50, pickup is between 2:00 and 2:15, recess is from 11:00 to 1:00, and aftercare starts from 3:00 to 6:00. And this is during the peak hours. What is the impact of all this traffic with all these children in the area going to be?
Again, negligible.
Why do you say negligible?
Because it doesn't generate a lot of traffic.
But, but no, the cars, no, no, I understand that, they're not gonna generate traffic, but they will be in the area when the traffic is going through, that's the whole point. The safety of the children, go walk and traversing and go wherever, they're out there in recess, so how are they impacted by this? And impacted's not the right word, but-
They're not impacted, because there's not a lot of volume from the site.
Okay, and then, another question is, because of the, not changing the use, but, you know, shifting of the use, the traffic coming down Prospect Place will increase because of this, right?